All right, welcome everyone to the May 19, 2015 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Emerson, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Tabke.
Here. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff would like to suggest that item 4A3, the final plat of Shenandoah East First Edition, be moved to make it item 10A. And secondly, there is an addition to the agenda on the table tonight, seeking permission to serve beer and wine in a city park for a special event, and that would become item 11F1, please.
F6, maybe? 11F1?
11F1.
Oh, we can't put it on consent?
You can certainly put it on consent if you like.
Does anyone have a problem with it being on consent? All right, consent it is. All right, any additions or corrections from council?
If you want consent.
Seeing none, we need a motion. Council Whiting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Saying my counsel, Luce, any discussion? Council Lehman.
So I assume 4A3, which is now moved to 10A, is no longer on consent?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, item number four, consent business. Anything to remove or add to consent? Council Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a second?
A second.
Counselor Mokel. Counselor Lehman.
We're adding 11F1.
Uh, that, yep, that was already added to consent.
Okay.
So we're good there. Discussion, real quick, does anybody have an issue if we were to put 11D1 and/or 11E1 on consent? The approval of city administrator employment agreement and the Quarry Lake Park Shelter Design?
Move D1 to consent.
D1 to consent?
Talk about E1.
All right, E1 we want to discuss, so will you accept that as an amendment to your motion? Counselor Mokel?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on those? All right, so we have, just so everyone following along at home, 4A3 has been moved off of consent, 4F6 has been added to consent, and 11D1 has also been added to consent. Everybody good?
4F6.
Is the new item.
Yeah, 4F6 was the beer for the chamber.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
All right, Ms. Wilson, could you please read the consent business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A1 accepts the annual review of the conditional use and mineral extraction permit for Shakopee Gravel Inc. 4A2 adopts resolution number 7576 approving the final plat of Valley Park Business Center Third Edition. 4A3 was removed from consent. 4C1 approves a parking restriction on 10th Avenue from Holm Street to Spencer Street to allow for a bike route. 4E1 approves the recommendation of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board to add option B to the community center improvement options presented at open houses scheduled for May 28th, June 1st, and June 3rd. 4F1 approves the minutes of the April 7th and April 9th, 2015 city council meeting, meetings. 4F2 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $1,229,348.90. 4F3 authorizes the interfund transfer of $1,642,697 from the general fund to various debt service funds and other interfund transfers. 4F4 authorizes the establishment of an enterprise fund for garbage and revises the interfund loan from the sanitary sewer fund to be repaid by the garbage enterprise fund. 4F5 adopts ordinance number 904, fourth series, and ordinance of the city of Shakopee amending Shakopee City Code, section 5.42, allowing small brewers to sell malt, liquor, and growlers on Sundays. 4F6 was added to the agenda, and it grants permission for beer and wine to be served by a licensed caterer and consumed by guests at the Chamber of Commerce's 60th Anniversary Open House to be held from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on June 17, 2015, in a special event tent within Memorial Park. And item 11D1 was added to consent. It authorizes the appropriate city officials to enter into the employment agreement with the city's new city administrator.
Well done, as always, thank you. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. This is a time where anyone who is here for an item that is not on our, on our agenda this evening has approximately five minutes to discuss with council if you have any issues you'd like to bring before us, and now is the time, again, items that are not on the agenda this evening. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to item number six. We need Counselor Mokel to call the EDA to order.
Ms. Emerson, could you please note the roll? Do you want me to open the public hearing first?
Uh, yeah, you can open your public hearing first.
And Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
A second? Second by Mr. Luce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
All right, just so everybody knows, we just opened up the, the city Shakopee EDA public hearing, and so now I need a motion to open up the city council public hearing. Counselor Mokel?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Saying my counsel, Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to a public hearing now for tax increment financing, District Number 17. Ms. DiMaggio.
Good evening. Tonight I'm here to discuss with you an option to establish TIF District Number 17. On the screen you'll see a map of where TIF District 17 is. It runs along Shenandoah and County Road 101. If approved, this economic, this would be an Economic Development TIF District, which would have a nine-year term. The purpose of this TIF District would be to fund infrastructure to the roads within the area. So I spoke with our attorney, Ms. Eddington, and she said that there are in-district improvements and out-of-district improvements. In-district improvements would be those that actually touch these parcels that where the district would be. So that would be Shenandoah Road and a section of Fourth Avenue. So I have a map that will show those to you. In orange you'll see Shenandoah Drive. There's approximately $500,000 worth of improvements that need to be done to Shenandoah Drive. Then you'll see Fourth Avenue in blue. On Fourth Avenue there's approximately $3 million of improvements that need to be done, although only a certain section of this actually is adjacent to where we're looking at putting the TIF District. So part of that would need to be funded as out-of-district improvements. There are also county road improvements that need to be done in this area to help facilitate growth. This growth would be by potential end-users looking at coming into this area. These are our last parcels that we have for development, and unfortunately, the infrastructure that we have there does not have the capacity to help this area to grow. So that's why tonight I'm coming to you asking for the establishment of a TIF District in hopes of using those funds to help bring these roads up to the standard that we can now have new businesses come in and grow this part of town. Here's a breakdown of the estimated public costs. Due to the county road improvements, out of the $5.7 million generated, Scott County this morning at their board meeting passed a resolution asking that they come to us and ask that approximately $3.4 million of those funds be used for county road improvements, which would leave the remaining balance for city improvements. So you'd see we have approximately $2.3 million to help pay for the city's portion of that public infrastructure that needs to be done. Here's a breakdown of what the, the final costs look like year per year. You can see the total gross that we would generate from this area would be about $5.7 million. The state auditor takes 0.36% for admin costs, which leaves the subtotal of 5.74. Then you would take off the county road improvements, which are approximately 3.379, which would leave the subtotal of $2,366,000. We could use those to help fund the, the city improvements that need to be done in this area. We would also keep some of the money to help pay for administering this TIF District. We'd keep approximately 2%, which is about $47,000. As I said, these infrastructure improvements are needed to facilitate growth in this area. We for sure have one end, end user looking at this, and we have a potential second end user looking to the west side of this property. We also have tenants potentially looking at coming on the south side of this property. And so with all these new tenants, all these new jobs, we need to have these infrastructure improvements to make it safe in that area. Do you have any questions of me?
Questions for Ms. DiMaggio. Counsel Lehman.
Originally, Fourth Avenue was scheduled to be done in 2018 without, without a TIF District. So why don't you explain how we were going to do that project without a TIF District in 2018?
And I don't want to speak for Mr. Looney, but I know that some of the improvements on there were very minimal, minimal improvements. So we weren't looking at, at the point that we're at now because of the amount of traffic in that area. I believe we're looking at a three-lane urban highway. In the past, we were looking at just reclaiming that area. So this will actually put in sidewalks and trails, and it'll update the, all the infrastructure in that area. Mr. Looney, do you want to answer to that?
Yeah, I'd like to expand on that a little bit. The, the first portion right by the subject site, that was in pretty good shape. Yeah, I probably should go up there.
Section right here.
Sam can keep me in line.
I'll pass it over, my friend.
Okay, this is kind of a map that we put together, but the area in blue on Fourth Avenue was in better shape, so we overlaid that to keep it in, you know, a pretty good high standard for the area. It's still a two-lane road. Fourth Avenue is, has been a two-lane, but it's a three-lane road to the west of Shenandoah. That has been an urban three-lane road with the sidewalk and trail on that side for a number of years. We reconstructed that in 2004. The rest of this in green is not overlaid candidate. It's a reclaiming, rehabilitation, or reconstruction. So it's a much higher project type than an overlay. We are looking at that. We were, with the traffic that we had, we could probably get by without a three-lane until there was more traffic generated, but that's what we were waiting for if we had more development. With the development that's occurring, with, with the existing development, a three-lane road is a good design. It's what's been recommended with the A U A R, recommended with the traffic study done by the consultant for the applicant, C-Frig, and it's something that we've been on our radar screens for a number of years. The, the other thing we'd like to look at in there is, right now it's a 50 mile an hour speed limit. We'd like to see, after this project was done, we'd like to see if we can get that lower to about 40. That would be something that we would like to look at. There's a number of access points now that we're trying to line up between Sanmar and all the other businesses that have come in over the years, TE Conductivity, and now the Amazon Project. So there's definitely a need to upgrade this roadway. And a key point would be to put the turn lanes in at 83 on Fourth Avenue. That's a key element in moving traffic, trucks and vehicles that bring employees in.
To answer your question?
Nah, part of it. Normally, we take on a project like this, we bond for it, we do the project, we assess 30% to the benefiting properties, 70% is levied over the general levy. Payments are made back on the bonds for the improvement over the course of years, depending, probably because the property owners pick whether they want to pay the assessment upfront or if they want to carry it out over years with interest. Does that process change?
Well, if we do this project, we're still going to do an assessment project. It'll be a reconstruction project. There will be some assessments. There'll be some storm drainage funds put in here. There'll be some capital improvement funds for the city, and there'll be TIF. Whatever TIF we can use to help with these improvements on Shenandoah and Fort, we're going to put into that, into those projects. It'll be a similar project. Like you say, normally, we would do that. This is a situation where it's not normal, where you have the, the added component of a TIF District and being able to capture those dollars and bring them into a project.
When you say capture those dollars, what we're really saying is we're taking the tax generated on that property over the course of eight or nine years and adding 100% of that tax revenue to a road project?
Whatever's eligible, we can do that. Whatever's not eligible will still remain as taxes.
Okay.
Which would get spread out to the entities on the property tax.
What's eligible and what's not eligible?
Well, as Ms. DiMaggio mentioned, the in-district, we can get 100% of the project cost adjacent to the site is eligible for TIF funding. Outside of that, and Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 20% of...
Total cost.
Of the total cost. So it's, it's not 100%. We'll get some TIF money in here, but we will not get, we can get 100% here and 100% there.
And Ms. DiMaggio, does our TIF plan as it stands today, does that intend to capture 100% of the... Could you go up to the microphone for us?
The TIF run that you have seen is a 90% TIF. It is not 100% TIF. See if I can bring that back up.
And what does that mean for everyone?
So basically, it will capture 90% of the city, the county, and the school districts' taxes on that. So fiscal disparities will still be paid, the state of Minnesota will still be paid, the school district referendum will still be paid, but 90% of what we could capture locally would be used to help pay for the, for the improvements in this area. So I have the breakdown. I think the total district over the course of time would have captured approximately 6.4, so there are still some funds going back to the taxing jurisdictions. I think the city and the county and the school district will each get approximately $47,000 a year back. And then any additional that isn't used on this project would then be returned as well.
So there will be an immediate influx of taxpayer of...
There will.
From this parcel to the general levy?
Yeah, and I can safely say that I think that we would have it even faster with these improvements in place. As of right now, we've been having to hold off development onto the west side of this because unfortunately, when you have an A U A R, which is kind of a traffic analysis, it tells us how much traffic this area can handle. And what we have right now is we need these improvements to be able to safely handle the traffic in that area. So as of right now, we cannot really continue to grow or build out this area because we don't have these improvements done. So it's really kind of a catch-22. If we want to continue to grow and bring in more businesses and generate more taxes, we have to do this infrastructure in order to make it safe for these businesses, their workers, our residents, anyone using this area.
Ms. Wilson, do you have something to add?
I was just going to clarify something Ms. DiMaggio said for the record. She referenced that roughly mid $40,000 would be flowing to the city, the county, and the school district. That was when we were looking at an 80% TIF District.
Oh, so it's a little bit less.
So if it's a 90% TIF District, the amount still flowing in new general fund revenue to the city, the county, and the school district...
But it would be less.
Would about half that, in, in the $20,000 range roughly.
I apologize. We've seen these numbers numerous times.
Lots of numbers, yes.
Counsel Lehman.
Is that for each of the eight or nine years of the district?
It is, yep.
Yes.
So over nine, eight or nine years, the revenue the city will see is 20 times nine?
Yep, roughly.
Plus the current taxes.
Plus the current taxes on that property, which I think we looked today, and the value of that property is 700, I don't know, $7 million, $7 million, and they're paying approximately $100,000 a year in taxes. So that will continue?
145.
That's what this is showing, because this is when it's already starting the... This is in 2015, so as of next year, this will be the number.
It's got the taxes, it's the tax capacity.
Got it.
So just so that I'm clear, between the city and the county, we're going to spend roughly $6 million to improve roads to, to collect $180,000 worth of taxes.
I wouldn't say that's an accurate statement, because that's just from this one parcel. You're not including the other parcels that we'll be able to generate more taxes off of. So this, these road improvements total, I believe, are close to $8 million. So Scott County and the city of Shakopee are still picking up additional funds that are needed for this. The total infrastructure needs in this area are probably over $8 million, because there's a second phase to this. Those are going to actually be done through typical taxes. So the infrastructure needed here really exceeded what anyone probably ever thought was necessary. I think if you were to tell someone within this area that they need $8 million worth of infrastructure, it would be quite surprising.
Other council members? Counsel Whiting?
The A U A R and the traffic studies that you did on this parcel, was this at the capacity of the 1,200 employees, or...
Sure. So the A U A R, when we looked at it, initially it told us that they thought that there could be, I think it was 800,000 square feet of office and 800,000 square feet of a distribution center. And then as we started to look at some of the end-users that we have coming in that area, they aren't what you would consider a typical user. So some of these may be distribution centers, but they have a lot more employees in these distribution centers than what would be typical. So the city's consultant asked that we do a traffic analysis. So that was done by a business that's actually looking at going in that area. They did a traffic analysis so we could see what the impact would be. Someone who's looking at going to the west side of this, I've also asked the same thing of them, that they also conduct a second traffic analysis on their parcel, just so that we can try to keep up with the speed of growth in this area to make sure that we can accommodate all this traffic. Each, you know, we can give an estimate of what we think a general office would bring, but as I said, some of the businesses that we have coming in aren't your typical, typical situations. I think even as we look at a Shutterfly on their large day, having over 1,000 employees is probably more than we ever would have estimated during that peak season. So those are what we're looking at with the traffic numbers in the A U A R, is not only what there's going to be on a daily basis, but what their peak is going to be, because we want to make sure that we can handle it every day, but that we can also handle it during their peak seasons.
So we are planning that in this, this upgrade to these roads for their peak season?
Exactly.
In their most potential that they have.
One, one key component we saw during the traffic analysis is the, this site's peak season is different than Canterbury and Valley Fair, which are the other big users of 83. So it kind of, it works good for the surrounding area, but it also blends in well with, I mean, the mitigation strategies that we had with the original A U A R, after doing the, the analysis with this new site, were the same mitigation strategies, and they work. So we're comfortable with that.
And I think that's a good comment that Mr. Looney just made, is in the A U A R, they actually give us mitigation measures that need to be taken to accommodate these traffic. So these measures that we're bringing forward tonight by Scott County and the city of Shakopee are what were detailed in those A U A Rs. They've told us what we need to do to mitigate, mitigate this traffic. So that's what we're trying to do. We didn't just pick and choose where we wanted things, these have actually come from them.
Counsel Whiting?
One more follow-up, and we really don't know what's going in here, so looking at our crystal ball, we're, we don't want to be coming back and doing this after a few more businesses come in. So we are looking at it at a peak potential for everything that could go down there.
Exactly.
Within reason.
One of the businesses that I met with just today that's looking at neighboring this property would have 200 employees. They have approximately 200 trucks a day that would be going in and out of here, so we want to make sure, maybe it was 100 trucks, my numbers are everywhere, but they have a lot of trucks, so we want to make sure that these roads can accommodate all of that and that they can do it safely. So that's one thing that we're trying to be ahead of the curve and not fall behind it. We're definitely trying to keep up on the growth that we're having in this area. As you all know, we're almost out of land in Shakopee, so these are our last parcels until we start annexing or moving to the west. These are kind of our last parcels, so we'll, we'll need to make sure that these roads can accommodate anyone looking, coming to town.
Counsel Mokel?
My question is for Mr. Looney. If we don't do this project, what in your opinion would happen to those roads before 2018 with this traffic?
Well, we need to, the, I have to go back to this other map. The, the green area, the pavement there is pretty well shot. We need to get going on that. That's, these roads would rapidly deteriorate with the amount of trucks and traffic on it. I mean, it's already getting beat up quite a bit with certainty and other trucks that are coming in there. It's time to move. We had it scheduled for 2018 because we were trying to see other areas develop, but now it's, I think it's the right time to move on it in 2016. So we, we got a lot of life in that pavement. It's actually an old county road that was given back to us way back, I don't know when, but, so the pavement's probably had quite a few years on it. It's ready to be, it's, it's time to upgrade. And Shenandoah, we've been just letting the trucks that are hauling dirt in just beat up the road because we, we know we're going to have to rebuild it. And we would let as many trucks get in there and, you know, beat up the road, and then when it's just about ready, we'll rebuild it prior to the opening of this, this site.
Other questions from council? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so anyone is free to come up and chat with us as you'd like. Please keep it germane to the topic. I'll cut you off if it's not. And so this is time to discuss this TIF for infrastructure and road improvements, and so you have a maximum of... so you have a maximum of five minutes. No, you cannot yield time to other people, and please don't be redundant as well. We appreciate it, 'cause there are a lot of folks here tonight. So if anyone would like to be first, you are more than welcome to come up and address us with a public hearing.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Bill Mars.
Welcome, Mr. Mars.
Thank you. So we're here just discussing the TIF district with the funds being funneled for road improvement at this point, is that correct?
Correct.
So I'm familiar with the site and Fourth Avenue, and if the development comes in here and you capture those dollars to upgrade Shenandoah and part of Fourth Avenue, I heard that 20% of the excess could be applied to this green portion of what is considered out of district. Is that correct?
Mostly, yes.
Okay. In the out-of-district area, my question pertains to two businesses that I know of in the last many years have received tax abatement or TIF in some style, Santamar and CertainTeed. When the green line out of district and you do your normal street reconstruction, I think it's 70, 30, assess 30, are you able, as a city, because you have financial agreements with those two businesses, at least that I mentioned, are you able to assess those businesses for this improvement that they would benefit from?
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I can stand corrected by Ms. Eddington if I'm any correctness, but I don't think anything in this prevents you from doming your normal public improvement project. You can still assess 30. If 70% would normally be spread among all the taxpayers, that amount might be reduced because of the TIF that would be used to offset that, but there's nothing that prevents you from following your normal assessment practice.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mars.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name's Paul Slattery. I'm with Teamsters Union Local 120. And I'm gonna try to keep this germane. I only heard Amazon mentioned once by Mr. Looney, but I just want to be clear, you know, that is the tenant that's gonna be coming into this partial right here. And what I wanna say about it is, hey, I'm really for the TIF money, and I'm really for bringing people like Amazon to Shakopee. I mean, what a great company to have here, a national company. I do wanna point out that the Teamsters do represent two companies that are right adjacent. CertainTeed is, we represent them, that's Teamsters Local 970, and Sher Brothers Lumber is Teamsters Local 120. So when we're welcoming these tenants in, I would like, I don't know how much influence you have with them, but to encourage them to do things in an open and honest way. If their employees want to band together and form a union, I mean, I think that they should be allowed to do that, and if you guys can have any influence in that, that would be great. If we come to you at some point saying we're having problems, I'd love your support. The other thing is, I don't know who's building the building, but Minnesota's a really strong union state, so I would love to see that building be built with union hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slattery. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Is this about Amazon, or is this the TIF and roads and that part of the project? Or are we gonna be discussing Amazon later?
If you would like to discuss Amazon now, you are more than welcome to. The TIF application, as it stands today, is, it really no longer includes Amazon, because they're not getting any, they're no longer getting any public financial incentives, so this is just a TIF district that the city is imposing upon this property in order to fund, using the increment to generate it from the public, from the improvements on the property, using that money to fund infrastructure projects. And so that's, it's a different way of funding infrastructure projects, so it's no longer about any incentives that Amazon will be receiving, 'cause there is zero direct public input from the TIF district into Amazon.
Okay, so am I to conclude then that Amazon is no longer interested in participating in that project, out in this acreage?
No, Amazon is, to our knowledge, definitely moving into that property and going to, is moving in the next phases of their development with the project, but they're not taking any public money for the project.
So that's already a forgone conclusion, that Amazon is going to be there?
No, that is item number, and it's not, the building, final plat of Shenandoah East First Edition, is what got removed from consent and moved to item number 10A. But that is not a public hearing, so if you have anything you'd like to say about it, do it now.
Thank you. Then I will take some time. My name is Tom Henham. I live up, um...
And Tom, you've got five minutes, remember.
Right about in here. Yep, okay. Okay. I am very concerned about Amazon not being a good neighbor. And I know some of the councilpeople have in fact visited them, and I would suspect that they showed you the best, of the best. If I had rental property, I'd show you the best of the best too, and you wouldn't be aware perhaps of some downfalls that they might have. Very recently, there was an article published by a study group called Good Jobs First. It's a nonprofit research group that tracks public subsidies, and not just Minnesota, nationwide. And their conclusion was not too high, didn't make Amazon look too good. Quotes, "Amazon is a master of getting money out of local governments." And that the amount of money that they're asking for being 6.4 million, although you say they're no longer asking for that?
That is correct. Amazon is getting zero in public direct investment from this TIF district.
Well, then we'll just discuss then, them perhaps not being very good neighbors. History has shown, based on this particular study, that out of a $10 million worth of sales, on average, 47 people are employed by that type of an entity. Amazon is a rather poor 14 people employed for $10 million invested in sales. I'm concerned about the low salaries. They have said, at least at the planning or the environmental economic development meeting, $12 to $16 an hour. There's a study that I pulled up called an economic development study, actually concluded by the Department of Employment and Economic Development by the state of Minnesota itself, and it was a report to the legislature for 2015, their annual report. The conclusion that they have made, just in a whole general concept, is that in the metropolitan area, a typical family is going to have to earn per employment $17.92 an hour just to meet basic needs of their health and safety. That is a far cry higher than what Amazon is offering from $12 to $16 per hour. Here in Shakopee alone, if you, I called eight different apartment complexes. A single bedroom averages here in Shakopee, over $800 a month. And when you add up all the costs that would live just for a single person here in Shakopee, it comes to over $30,612. That's including car payments, utilities, food, just to live here in Shakopee. That's $15.31 an hour, and they're only gonna be offering $12 to $16? That doesn't sound too well for the city of Shakopee from the standpoint, are we then gonna be forced to provide low-income housing? If that's gonna be part of the stipulation or part of the consequences, my house values are gonna go down, your home values are gonna go down. And again, $12 to $14 or $16 bucks an hour is not sustainable. That same study that was concluded by Minnesota-
Ms. Henon, you're four minutes in, just so you know.
I'm sorry?
You're four minutes in, just so you know, you've got one minute left.
Okay. Again, the average salary just in the metropolitan area is $17.92 an hour to just provide basics. Statewide, it's $16.34 an hour. Again, far higher than what they're offering. And I know there was some comment made about, well, we'll hopefully gonna get light rail transit in here. If you read the recent article in the Star Tribune about the problems that they're having up in Eden Prairie and Brooklyn Center, they've got thousands and thousands of possible people who would ride a light rail system. If anybody thinks that the Metropolitan Council is gonna bring a light rail system out here, I've got some land in Florida that I think I could sell you too. That's not gonna happen, or it's certainly not gonna happen in the next 20 years until the population center of Scott County increases to 100,000-plus.
Thank you, Mr. Henon. I've got a couple things I don't think anyone has ever mentioned. Light rail, as there's been transit, has been discussed. I don't recall light rail ever being the piece of it. There's transit options that are other than light rail. So we have a representative from that council who will be discussing that tonight, just so you know. And then, there's another point that you made. We had a couple council members who visited. Would you guys like to expand? Thank you, Mr. Henon, you can have a seat now. Would you guys like to expand on your trip on Friday?
We can now, or if you wanna continue on the public hearing for now, or...
Not that it's been brought up. I would rather just address it now.
Well, as far as the amount of work that Amazon gets out of their people, they've got it down to a science of how to be efficient. They're efficient in so many ways. Their people don't have to walk to the parts. Robots bring the stuff to them. So, you know, it saves lots of time that way. You know, I used to work in warehouses. When you're walking around, you're wasting a lot of time. Bringing the material to you is just fantastic.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that. I thought the area around the business park was very clean and well-kept, and when you went into the plant, it was very active and some of the highest tech and most user-friendly workstations that I've seen. There's no bending and lifting, it's all conveyors and standing and twisting with plenty of ergonomic controls and things. Looked like they had quite a training facility and area that they were training people. There was, as far as employees, there was anywhere in the range of age from just over 18 to, I would say, in their 60s. So it employs a multitude of people in different capacities, and thought everything was run very efficiently and everything was very clean. I didn't see anybody that looked like a disgruntled employee at all, and plenty of activity. So I wanna thank you guys for giving us the tour and appreciate that. We hit you with a lot of tough questions, and I appreciate the response and kinda get a better feeling of what Amazon will be as a neighbor. This is vacant land, so it's really close to downtown, so it's gonna change the atmosphere of our community if this goes through. But I think in the end, Amazon would be good neighbors and run an efficient plant, and I don't think we'd hear a lot from them.
Do either of you have any reason to believe that this plant was run differently or significantly better than what we would see in our community?
No, I think we're probably gonna see what, I think they call it 8.0 or whatever for the generation that they're at. We're gonna see the next generation.
Seems like they tweaked their next plants to be a little more efficient and with some of the most high-tech equipment I've ever seen, and I don't see it as being anything different. Except we'll have, there will be concerns with traffic and more people in town, and I think that's gonna be different, but this is, you know, industrial area, and so that's what our expectations were for that area. So I don't see it as an issue.
Councilman Lewis.
We had some questions on truck traffic and that, and I think they're gonna come with some numbers tonight on that. We didn't see a lot of truck traffic, in fact, very little, but we didn't see them on a peak time either. I mean, we're, you know, kind of in their slow time, probably. I thought the area was really nice, clean, quiet. I talked to the mayor of the city there and asked him those questions exactly. Did they see any increase in crime? Did they have any noise problems, any of that? Was Amazon a good civic partner? And he said yes to the civic partner. He said they gave, I believe it was Kindles to the first graders. That's a good thing, you know, it's positive action. They did a donation of a handicap van to a family that needed it. So they do help. You know, we're talking a very large company, so those things there are fairly small, but they're doing something.
Then my last question for the both of you as well, is there any, you touched on it, Councilwoman Whiting, but we've heard a lot about the quality of the jobs. The wages of the jobs, I understand, is concerning with it, and we'd obviously like to see that as high as they can possibly go for our community, but is there any concern about the quality and the work environment of those workers that we as a council should be aware of or concerned about?
I think it was a clean and safe environment. People seemed happy to be there, working hard, with some of the best efficiencies. There are some other things that they talked about as far as hiring veterans and having an opportunity to, after you've been working with Amazon for a while, to get some funding for going on a new career path, if that's the way you wanna go. They have lots of programs like that. I think there's stock options for some of the employees to get into. So they have a lot of, they have a lot of need for employees, and so there's a lot of good training. And like I said, it's, I haven't seen a safer and more ergonomically controlled environment where people are reusing higher-tech equipment and computer systems to the best of the ability and efficiency that they can. So I think it's a, would be a good place to work, although the wages are a little low.
Okay. Councilors Lehman and Mogul, do you have any other questions for... All right. Thank you guys very much for going on that research trip for us. It was a long day for you both, including Sam, so I appreciate everybody going on that and checking it out for us. Mr. Carson's.
I'll sign in after, in the interest of time.
All right.
Kevin Gillick, 13667 West, here in Shakopee. I need, I need the help, just a little education, because I don't know what it means to me, 'cause I don't live in that area. I don't, I'm not adjacent to it, but the one slide said 5.7 million of public cost. So how does that affect me as a residential individual? I heard 30% to somebody, 70% to another. I'm just trying to wrap my arms around what this 5.7 million public cost means to the average resident in Shakopee.
Are you asking that now, or do you wanna finish first? The way that using tax increment financing works is that there's a current existing amount on the property that we, as a city, we never dip into that current existing amount, so right now they pay whatever Ms. DiMaggio said earlier in taxes to the three entities, city, county, school, district, each year. And so after the property is improved, that, their taxes go up. So if their taxes go from, we'll call it $1 a year to $5 a year, that $4 is what we are using for, we are capturing that $4 as money that would be paid to the three entities, the city, the county, and the school board, for public improvements. And so we're using that for infrastructure, and so it's a way to finance, it's a mechanism allowed by the state for financing public infrastructure improvements. And so we are utilizing it in that way. So the 5.7 million is what, that $4 increment, so the improvement in my little example that I, my simple example that I just put together, that's the increment of improvement. And so we are giving, using 90% of that increment for road improvements, and if council agrees tonight, the 10% that's left over of that increment will flow directly into our general levies of each of the three entities, and that will be utilized for any additional police that needs to be done or other public fire and those kinds of things that come with additional development. So that's what that 10% is going to, and then once the nine years is over, the full taxing authority goes to all the general levies. Does that help? Does that help to answer your question?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Is that clear to everyone else?
Mayor?
How's it, Louis?
Odds are your taxes aren't going to go up.
That was my question.
Got it.
All the tax money that we get right now from that property stays where it is. It comes to us and the county and the school. Anything that go, when the property's built up, any increase in taxes for nine years is going to be used to improve the roads in the area, which need improving anyway. We'd be paying for that. So we're using their taxes to pay for our roads.
Thank you. That was clear to me. Because when we did the school referendum, it was clear to, in an individual what the impact was. When property taxes went up, it was clear to us what the impact was. It was unclear to me when this said 5.7 million public cost, what the impact was. So it was vague. So I appreciate the clarity of that answer.
The other item is the school bond or the school board referendum, they still have to pay.
Understood. Understood.
It's my understanding that 50% of the green line on that screen is going to be a general levy cost. So all taxpayers in Shakopee are going to pay for that. Normally it would be 70%. But, but if we're allowed to use 20% of the taxes for the next nine years from a building that ain't there yet toward that green line, it'll buy it down from 70 to 50.
And, and my expectation would be, to your point, if that's the history, that we would normally disperse 70 everywhere, to disperse 50 seems like a good deal by comparison. Okay, that's all you had. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, I got your name wrong. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Dan Marshall, and my wife and I own PeaPods Natural Toy Store in St. Paul, Minnesota. We're on Como Avenue by the state fairgrounds. Also, the policy coordinator for the Metro Independent Business Alliance, where an organization of over 300 locally-owned independent businesses throughout the Twin Cities. I am here because I've been competing against Amazon for 16 years as a business owner. And I want to make sure you all know who you're partnering with as a business partner here. But first, I want to commend the council and the mayor for removing direct subsidies from this deal. Every other state, is my understanding, has given, has paid Amazon for the privilege of taking over their retail tax base. And I'm glad to see that you've chosen not to do that. I'd also like to thank Council Wyden, Louis, Lehman, and Mayor Tabke for your time on the phone over the course of the past week or so. You've been very responsive, and I appreciate that. As you know, there are hundreds of independent locally-owned businesses all over the Twin Cities, from bookstores to toy stores like myself, hardware stores, art supply stores, clothing stores, shoe stores. We all know them. They're what make our communities unique. They are what pays property taxes, pays sales taxes. They employ their owners. They employ dozens of additional workers in each town, in each intersection, thousands of people throughout the Twin Cities. There's been a lot of talk about a jobs opportunity here with, with this Amazon development. And I want you all to understand that Amazon moving in does not mean that people will be buying more paper towels. It does not mean that people will be buying more DVD players. It does not mean they'll be buying more shoes. They're just going to be buying them more from Amazon because Amazon's going to be able to offer same-day, next-day delivery on 50,000 different SKUs out of this particular warehouse. All right? So Amazon actually takes jobs away because those things that people are going to be buying now from Amazon because they're making it even more convenient for people throughout the Twin Cities will no longer be purchased at the corner store, at the local hardware store, at stores like mine, than repurchase from Amazon. Amazon employs two people for every seven people the rest of the retail world employs. And that includes big box stores like Target and Walmart, you know, who per million-dollar sales employ far more people than Amazon does. And that's because Amazon's super efficient. Robots are pretty efficient. My store doesn't have any robots. We tried with the vacuum thing for a while, but that didn't work real well. I, I guess Amazon's better at robots than I am. I'm good with people. I'm good with telling a person exactly what kind of toy they need for their three-year-old birthday present. And I'm sure Amazon tries. They can figure out when you log in, what kind of toy you want. But I can guarantee you it's not going to be as cool a toys as what I can offer. Amazon pays low wages, but you know what they also do? They program their employees' workday. Every step they take is tracked. Amazon went to the United States Supreme Court so that they wouldn't have to pay their workers for the time that they spend waiting in line at the end of their shifts to get frisked, to make sure they're not stealing anything. Can take up to 25 minutes. They went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court, and they won. Because guess what? They had better lawyers. Amazon offered people a discount when they came into our store.
You have one minute left.
All other stores throughout the country and used their app and placed an order in a brick-and-mortar store, they give them a discount to showroom our stores. Amazon fought for over 15 years to pay sales tax, to not pay sales taxes in Minnesota. They claimed they didn't have the capability. They can recommend what kind of book they think you might want to read, but they claimed they didn't have the capability to figure out what sales tax would be. They avoided paying sales tax until they started talking to you all about coming here. This is not a reputable company. This is a BMF that can afford to buy Shakopee if they want to. And not just this parcel, but all of Shakopee. Jeff Bezos just bought the Washington Times for a hobby, Washington Post, rather, as for a hobby. So I want to make sure you all know who you're dealing with. This is an entity that has a worse reputation than Walmart, in my book. It doesn't play fair. It's not going to play fair with you, just like it hasn't played fair with us. And representing the Metro Independent Business Alliance, like I said, over 300 member businesses, we appreciate the fact that you're not giving money directly to Amazon. And we know there's another shoe. And when they come to you for something else, I hope you treat them with the skepticism that they deserve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for being here and giving us your opinion. Anyone else like to speak in the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have some follow-up questions now that we're talking directly about Amazon in regard to the TIF district. You gave a good example of the TIF district, of the expansion of the value, and you capture that, and now you're directing it to the roads. And you're going to do that for nine years. But what that does mean is that those dollars won't come to the general fund. They'll be paying for some roads. And the 20 grand extra, that'll help pay for the police and the fire. Question number one, is Amazon going to pay the standard park dedication fee? As some of the council members are lovers of parks and parks we value here in our community, are they going to pay a park dedication fee?
Yes.
Okay, on the full value, or?
That is, that is item number 10A.
Not a problem. Then, it's just a different, TIF district where, I don't know, we're not giving them direct aid. So our economic EDA policy, does that apply here when we talk about mandate? I know in the last two years, the council has used a lot of different incentives to help companies come here. And then you worked in workshops to develop a better, stronger policy of what we would, as a city, want in return for assistance of any type. Livable wage is one of them. Are we going to apply that economic development manual to Amazon and livable wages? Are we going to, they say a thousand jobs, which is great. I've seen employers in the past where they say, we're going to give you 100 jobs, and two years later, they're 80 or 75. And they don't live up to what they said. So want to know if there's going to be a marker and a way to track that. Also, I read that you're, the TIF district is going to be for nine years. It's all changed here in the last 24 years, or 24 hours since the way I want to talk. But the roads are going to get improved with the captured revenue for nine years. And after that, I, what caught me off-guard on the previous was that Amazon was going to sign a lease for 15 years, of which before they wanted assistance for nine of that. I felt if a company wanted to come to Shakopee, might help them and assist them in some way. But I really want them to get taxed just as long as, for how many years, that they get assistance. Kind of, we're all in this together. If we're going to assist you for nine years, then maybe that you'd want to be on the full tax rolls for the same amount of time. And now the district is changing because we're not giving them direct assistance.
You've got like one minute left, Mr. Marshall.
That, I, my questions about the lease, jobs, the two questions on jobs, coming out of your economic policy that you spent copious amounts of time reworking, is this going to apply to the subject company, Amazon, coming on this parcel?
The answer to that one is no, it is not, because we're not giving any, using this TIF district for a business incentive. So it's no longer falls under a business incentive policy. Am I saying that correctly, Ms. DiMaggio? And the wages that are in there are very clearly delineated with 175% or 200% of federal minimum wage, 1450 an hour.
1450 jobs that would have mattered policy.
Right. So that piece obviously doesn't matter anymore because there are no public monies going directly to that project. And then I didn't quite catch your third question.
Well, it was on the lease. It's just a concept on the lease. But, you know, I feel in fairness, trying to be, help a company, but I just want you to come, sign a nine-year lease and get a nine-year assistance. And then after nine years, they could leave and take the assistance and be gone. I just want to balance that out, especially as someone that upholds for the city, the benefit of the city of Shakopee. And so I guess you have answered my questions on the park dedication fee, and I appreciate that.
And I'll expand a bit, little on that number three that you had. Is it, is, it's my understanding that they will be signing a 15-year lease on the property. So it'll be 15 years, 220-plus million dollars worth of investment on that property. And we definitely, if this were direct business incentives, we would absolutely be having our, our clawbacks in those for if projects didn't have the job creation that we expected to happen with that. But that's not a piece of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barber?
Good evening. My name is Deb Barber. I'm the Metropolitan Council representative for District Four, which is here in Shakopee. I'm here to talk about an issue that has come up through several of the discussions, both through the strong business development we've had here in Shakopee, but definitely with Amazon coming in. And that relates to workforce transit solutions. And I will tell you first off that Chair Donick did want to be here tonight. That was his plan, due to some scheduling issues. He could not make it tonight, but he's definitely fully supportive of the discussion that we're having here tonight. Council itself is very keenly aware of the needs for additional transit options for our workforce out here, especially with the businesses coming in. While in that process, there have been active discussions with the suburban providers and with DED. And those discussions I expect will continue and expand as Amazon comes in. While a lot of these things are being initiated, things such as the 169 corridor study, which is, I believe you guys are a funding partner with. But that is one study which is going to focus on the entire corridor, talking with cities and counties, but will also be talking to businesses. And so it's a good opportunity to further get out the information that we need additional transit options for our workforce out here. Additionally, there's been a new development in the last couple of days with the transportation bill coming out of the legislature. One thing that they did do that they passed with this bill was they, was $2 million, $1 million each for two years, that will go to suburban transit providers. And the intention of that funding is to do demo products either for suburb-to-suburb transportation or expanded suburb, or more routine routes. And it can be either express or routine routes. And it's for a period of a couple of years at this point in time. Chair Donick and Met Council is very supportive of this and are very, are committed to providing technical and whatever council resources they need, whether it's assistance in helping to secure additional funding or design services, but to help facilitate the process so that we can start looking at some of the suburb-to-suburb transit, which is very important for all of us and for our workforce. At this point, it's really up to MVTA to decide, well, to all the suburban providers, including MVTA, to decide what to do with those funds. But it's a good opportunity for the city of Shakopee to get engaged with MVTA to further expand on what the needs are here locally. And so I would hope that you would do that. But I think it's the beginning of a number of discussions that will help some of our workforce transit needs. So, any questions?
Thank you. How's it, Wyden?
Thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations on your seat on the Met Council and representing Shakopee. One thing I wanted to talk about when we had a lot of discussion when we were in New Jersey was the transit package that, that Amazon did with the local, the state of New Jersey, and also it was at Mercer County in the area. They worked hard with those agencies to extend a transit line and actually helped in investing in that. So at the end of their regular bus lines, they created another shuttle bus, I guess you'd call it, to get their workers to where they needed to be. So this is nothing new. I'm sure it's the, as far as Amazon's working with the community to try and work out a transit package. I think this is, it's discussions now, and I don't think anything's hardened and anything. But I think these are the discussions that are going to really make this deal good for our community, for both the jobs market and also our, you know, recreation community that could use both workers and people to come and enjoy their, the different sites. So I see Amazon doing this. I hope they can work with the Met Council and the suburban providers and we can get something done with this.
And I think with this new funding coming up, it's a good timing for some of those discussions, especially because each of the suburban providers are going to have to decide how they want to get involved in that process and how they want to spend that money. So right now, it's, the bill has only passed in the last couple of days, so details are minimal. But it's a, it's a good timing and a good opportunity for those discussions.
Council, Louis?
Yeah, I'd like to challenge all parties involved with the transit deal. New Jersey could do it. We should be able to do it.
Exactly. Exactly. Any further questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Barber. We appreciate you being here. And like Council Wyden said, congratulations on your new post and representing District Four.
Thank you.
All right. So again, this is public hearing. So is anyone else like to speak on items that are the items before us? We have quite a few folks from Amazon here this evening. Would you like to say anything? Okay. You don't have to, but you can if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight. I appreciate your consideration of the project and appreciate everyone that turned out to participate in this. My name is Mike Grella, Director of Economic Development for Amazon. And I just wanted to provide some clarity with regard to some of the points that were made earlier, with regard to the point about small businesses. Amazon is very well-known and recognized as providing the largest global platform for small business enterprises and small business incubation. The main program for our retail business that benefits small and mid-sized businesses is called Fulfillment by Amazon. Fulfillment by Amazon allows small, mid-sized businesses of any size to list their products on our website to, instead of just reaching a local audience, reaching a global audience of many, many millions of customers. It provides flexibility to businesses where they can either fulfill orders online, where they ship the packages out to customers as long as they can meet the commitment to fast delivery and meet the customer's expectations. Or they can provide the inventory to Amazon where essentially the product is listed, we fulfill the orders, we do all of the logistics and delivery, and then the, for a fee, and then the remainder of the payment goes back to the business. And so there are many, many thousands of businesses and many thousands of employees that are employed indirectly through our Fulfillment by Amazon platform and also Merchant Fulfillment Network, which is where companies use and ship their own inventory to products but list on our website. So I wanted to make that abundantly clear. With regard to the Supreme Court case, which was dismissed summarily, that the, it was proven that the allegations, the substantive allegations about the 30-minute wait times were not true whatsoever, and that I wanted to make clear for the- wait times were not true whatsoever, and that, uh, I wanted to make clear for the record that there has, that matter has been adjudicated in our favor and that, uh, the accusations have been successfully, uh, rebutted. They were just not true. Uh, with regard to the time to pass through security, it is shown to be less than ninety seconds, not thirty, thirty minutes as was alleged. Um, we have global processes in place to ensure that entry and exit from our facilities is standardized, to the extent that we get feedback from associates or management that these practices are not being adhered to or it causes a problem for our associates, uh, we would make sure to address those problems, uh, immediately. So, uh, want to make sure that that's clear for the record. With regard to the quality of jobs, I wanted to make abundantly clear that these are very good jobs. These all employees, not just management employees, all full-time associates receive comprehensive healthcare, they receive 401K match, fifty percent matching level by the company. We provide, uh, stock grants, not stock options. We provide, uh, raises and increase in pay based upon time of service and other types of bonuses that, uh, employees are eligible for. The numbers that were thrown around earlier with regard to those twelve-dollar numbers do not take into consideration any of these bonuses, any of the stock grants, any of the raises or increases that are available. Additionally, we offer our employees a program called Career Choice. Career Choice, as was mentioned earlier by, uh, Council Member Whiting, is an innovative program that allows associates, uh, to participate in a, in getting an associate's degree or some level of certification or accreditation in, uh, high-demand fields of employment. So, in Shakopee, we would look at what are the areas that are in-demand occupation, whether it's healthcare IT or nursing or, uh, mechanics or engineers or any type of occupation where where there is a need for those jobs to be filled in the Shakopee, in the, in the area, and that we would prepay ninety-five percent of the tuition for employees to pursue a degree or certification in those chosen fields, whether or not that involves a long-term career at Amazon. So, uh, whether or not you would want to be the nurse or mechanic for Amazon, if you get that certification, that you can continue your employment elsewhere, and we think that that's good for our associates, to give them that choice. Not everybody would want to make the choice to spend their entire career, uh, working at a fulfillment center, so we provide employees that option to enrich their career and stay at Amazon and grow, or to choose another field that they're interested in and that is, uh, a high-demand field.
Mr. Grella?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to hold you to your five minutes as well, so you've got one minute left.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Again, public hearing. Anyone else like to speak, uh, at a public hearing? Yep?
I'm sorry, just one, one thing. I just, I just won't even be admitted, but, uh, Mr. Grella, I know, I noticed that you didn't, uh...
Uh, Mr. Slattery, we're not going to get into a back and forth with regard to, you will address us and address myself, um, but we're not going to get into a, a back and forth piece here tonight with...
I was just going to ask about the unionization because he didn't address that, so...
Got it. Thank you. You can ask him after the meeting if you'd like. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Nina Lindsay. I'm with Amazon. Thanks so much for having us here today. Thanks for everyone's time. Really appreciate everyone's questions. Just wanted to address two items. Um, one was a statement about tracking employees. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that is untrue. Um, we absolutely do not track our employees. Um, that's not true. Um, and also in regard to, um, organizing, we absolutely respect the rights of our workers. We have an open-door policy where we encourage them to bring their questions, concerns, and ideas directly to our management team. We believe that that's the most effective way to, um, answer our associates' questions and concerns, but again, just to say, we fully respect our associates' rights in every way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last call for the public hearing. All right. I will, uh, Counsel Mokel, will you please close, uh, the EDA's public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the EDA public hearing.
Do I get... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
All right. Now we'll close the City Council public hearing. I need a motion to close the City Council public hearing. Counsel Mokel.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Give a second.
Second.
Second by Counsel Lehman. Discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, before we do a motion here, are there any final questions, things that have not been addressed that we'd like to see addressed, uh, this evening, um, of staff or of the, uh, property?
Jim is acting like...
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you can certainly have, answer any questions, but I think the, uh, plan is not just, the, the hearing's now been closed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the next step would be just for the council to go into recess, so the EDA can finish the rest of the meeting, including the acting on this item, and then we, the council reconvene and you'll act on it again at that time.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I was going to screw that up. Thanks for...
So do you want a motion for council to go into recess?
Right.
Well, unless there are any, I would rather finish questions that we have right now, if anybody has any questions. Okay. Then I need to entertain a motion to, uh, recess City Council for EDA meeting.
Motion to recess City Council for EDA meeting.
Second by Counsel Luze. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. And just so everybody knows, what we're doing right now is we have to have a little EDA, Economic Development Authority, meeting before we can, uh, complete the, uh, item that we're just on. So we need to take care of that real quick and then we'll get, we'll recess the, um, we will conclude the EDA meeting and then go back to City Council meeting and take action, just so everybody knows where we are. Counsel Mokel.
Um, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Mr. Lehman, second, by Mr. Whiting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Can I get a motion to, for approve the consent? Mr. Lehman.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent business taking item three B off.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Whiting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Should we do the acquisition first? Maggio.
I apologize, I didn't prepare a formal presentation. We have talked about this numerous times, so if you have any further questions of staff, I think before you'll see the final acquisition price from Scott County for the property located at two-three-four First Avenue. Acquisition price is approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars. Scott County has applied for the Petro Fund. Any funds that come back will come back to the city of Shakopee. I also have a breakdown in your packets, and I apologize to the audience and people at home that they can't see all the numbers, but there are some funds that will be returned since this is a tax-forfeited property. The city of Shakopee will get back some of the, some of the funds that we're paying, as will Scott County.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Whiting.
Um, I wondered if you had any questions since you took it off...
I wanted the opportunity to vote against it like I have the last four times.
Okay. Mr. Whiting.
I'd like a motion to, uh, authorize the, for the, authorize staff to acquire the acquisition of two-thirty-four First Avenue West for one hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, uh, from the property acquisition and authorizing the appropriate EDA officials to execute the necessary documents to finalize, finalize the acquisition.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tabke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Me.
So passes four to one with Lehman in dissent. All right. General Business, Tax Increment Financing District. Any questions, comments? Mr. Tabke.
I make a motion for, uh, resolution, I'm not used to doing these, fifteen dash seven, resolution approving Tax Increment Financing Plan for Tax Increment Financing, Economic Development District Number Seventeen, and a Modified Redevelopment Plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Whiting.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair. I, I just want to point out that the plan you're approving is the one that was on your dais tonight, uh, not the one that was distributed with the council packet, so, which reflects the change that you've all been discussing, but...
Mr. Lehman.
Well, so far in tonight's discussion, I think we spent, what, ten million dollars now? And we're not even started. Uh, and a property that's going to pay us back not even six over ten years. So, how that benefits the citizens at large, I'm not really sure. It's actually going to cost them. The jobs are not at the level that I would, uh, expect, and, uh, the transportation concerns are here today. One sixty-nine is a parking lot every morning. This is only going to exaggerate the problem. The, the state government has got a lights-on policy, transportation belly passed, which does very little till next session. Um, Met Council's got two million to spend. On top of the six, we're going to spend for infrastructure, which is going to be eight. So we're up to ten on a property that's going to pay us, not even us, us and the county and the school combined, six. So, it's, uh, not financially good. It doesn't help the citizens and businesses at large, and, uh, I have a problem with that.
Mr. Whiting.
Well, I disagree. Uh, this is, uh, road improvements for the city that, uh, were intended to go a little later in our projects, but, uh, are coming to a head because of, because of this particular project. And these are improvements that are going to help other potential businesses in that area that we'd need to do anyway, uh, when those businesses take off, and, uh, and I fully, uh, believe that they will soon. Um, so I see this as something that's necessary, and it's basically paying ourselves to fix these roads the way we need them to complete this project, so...
I agree. Mr. Tabke.
Um, and I believe that your math is completely wrong on that, um, because the, the property will, uh, uh, bring in, uh, we are not pulling out from the increment as much as the property will be bringing into the city, county, and school district in taxes over the course of the nine years. And then, after the nine years, as long as Amazon is occupying the building, there will be well over a million dollars per year of taxes generated by that property alone. Um, and so there is a, uh, significant short-term, midterm, and long-term financial positive to every single taxpayer in the city, businesses, homeowners, everyone, by completing this project. If everything were to stay exactly the same, if our levy were to stay exactly the same, if everyone's property values were to stay exactly the same, and Amazon's building is added in the mix, the improvement on the property, every single property in, in the city, taxes would be reduced. And so, your, your math is not accurate, and that is unfortunate.
Oh, Mayor, let's prove your point.
I'm not done yet.
Let's, let's prove your point.
Counsel Lehman, I'm not done speaking yet.
Okay.
So, your, your math is not working out for residents of Shakopee, and it's unfortunate that you're trying to skew the numbers to go that direction.
I'm not trying to skew them.
Okay.
For nine years, they're going to pay ten percent.
This is Counsel Mokel's meeting.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Lehman.
For ten years, you stated they're going to pay, uh, nine years, staff stated they're going to pay ten percent. It's a ninety, ninety percent TIF, and that ten percent is roughly twenty thousand dollars of new tax-generated dollars toward the city.
What's the hundred that is already generated?
Which is already spent, and it has been spent every year in the city's general budget because we've collected that money every single year. So that's money that we're already spending last year and the year prior. So, that's not new money. That's an, an existing expectation as it is on a household that's currently paying taxes. So, over nine years at twenty thousand dollars, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of new, new dollars. Now, if, if we want to prove your point, then let's hold the levy flat. Let's hold the, the tax rate flat, and let's prove that this is going to lower people's taxes. I'm okay with doing that. So if you want to do that, I'm all for it. Let's do it.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Luze.
I'm not quite sure on either of your math if they're going to work out. But I think my math might be a little different. We need to do this project in order to get the one to the west. The one to the west is going to get no subsidies. They've already been told that, so that's a hundred percent gain. Whatever theirs is, is going to be a plus, and that's going to help us in your manner to lower taxes in the whole city. So, I think I'm in favor of it. I wasn't originally, but that they came in and said they don't want any part of it, that put me on board because the numbers do come up very close to doing what they need to do. The other property next door will be a bonus.
Thank you, Mr. Luze, and I like your math. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Lehman in dissent.
I just, I don't know. I have a question.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June second, twenty fifteen, at seven P.M.? Mr. Lehman.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June second, seven P.M.
All right. And a second by Mr. Luze. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
All right. Reconvene Shakopee City Council meeting, and we continue with item seven A, the Tax Increment Financing, TIF District Number Seventeen, um, and need a, uh, motion. Counsel Whiting.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Seventy-five, seventy-eight, a resolution approving a Tax Increment Financing Plan for Tax Increment Financing, Economic Development District Number Seventeen, and a Modified Redevelopment Plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One.
And I'll second.
Second by Counsel Mokel. Discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
Passes four to one with Counsel Lehman in dissent. Thank you very much. Um, now if we could quickly go through the next item, uh, item ten A, and then we'll take a quick recess. Sorry, Jamie, who's out there? Um, so, item number ten A is the, sorry, I lost it. Final Plaid of Shenandoah East First Edition, Resolution Seventy-five, seventy-five. Does anyone have questions on this one? Uh, need a motion then? Counsel Mokel.
I will make a motion, offering Resolution Number Seven-five, seven-five, of resolution approving the final plaid for Shenandoah East First Edition and move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Lehman. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just before, was there another condition that, that staff was contemplating adding to the...
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't even see you up there, Mr. Noble. Do you have anything you want to add?
I'm just here for questions, if you have.
Well, you look good, so that is good. Well done. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Entertain a motion for, uh, eight-minute recess.
I'll make a motion.
Counsel Mokel.
Second.
Second by Counsel Lehman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess for eight minutes.
And move on to Item Number 11E1, Quarry Lake Park Large Shelter Design. Ms. Polly. Thank you for letting us have another recess before you speak. We appreciate it.
Anything I can do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight to ask council to approve a concept plan for our large shelter at Quarry Lake Park. One of the reasons that we need this approval is to move forward with knowing what the footprint of that building will be on the Quarry Lake Park site so we can complete the Quarry Lake groundwork design of the grading and the layout of the parking lots, the trails, that sort of thing. We have a couple of ADA issues that we need to work with as far as grading to get down to the fishing piers that we plan. And where this building sits and how big it will be will factor into how we route those trails down to the water's edge. So, we're here tonight to talk to you about this large shelter and to get an approval of the concept plan that the park board is recommending. Just for an overview, bringing up, here is the preliminary master plan of the Quarry Lake Park that has been approved, and this is what we're working on as we put the final plan together and develop the plans and specifications for Quarry Lake Park. As you are aware, this is the area for the large shelter or the idea of where that large shelter will be placed on the site. This is the area of the site, too, that can hold that shelter. There's a lot of other areas on the site that can't withstand a building because of what's buried underneath from when we reclaimed the quarry. But this is a very nice place that has been designed for some sort of a structure. So, moving forward, on December 2nd, the city council met to talk about this large shelter in a work session and decide or give us feedback on what our vision for a large shelter is. What would it be used for? What kind of events would we have? And at that point, it was the desire of the council to have a plan for this large shelter in the future that it would host community events. It would be large enough to have weddings, programs, family reunions, company picnics, that sort of thing with an enclosed area larger than our typical park shelter. On the site, we also, and I'll put it back up one more time. On the site, we also do have a small shelter that will be an open-air picnic shelter with the potential, as council had directed, to possibly have restrooms in that shelter as well, depending upon the timing of the two shelters. Right now, we're looking at the large shelter being where the main restrooms are for the park users. If the large shelter is built as a Phase Two or Three of the park down the line, and we want bathrooms out there immediately, that smaller shelter could have the option of putting bathrooms on it when we construct that. And that will come forward to you as we work on that final design for the park. The small shelter is included, and we have budgeted for the entire park at this time. The large shelter is in addition to that. So, we move forward with that. As you know, WSB is our architect on the entire park project. They have hired HCM to do the architectural piece. So, tonight, I have Matt Listnies...
I'm sorry, I said that wrong.
And Von Kelly from HCM are here tonight to answer any questions that you might have on the concept plans that we've come up with to date. But going forward, we met with them, and we talked about what do we wanna see in these types of designs for the park. So, we talked about a couple of different options. Staff met with them and with WSB. And a couple of the ideas that we threw out were, we like that Huber look. The city brick, the way we have built some of our other shelters, the gable ends, the wood, but also the steel. A lot of the ideas we had came out of being like a homey feel, but then also because it's in the industrial park, having that industrial look of those beams. So, wood, beams, stone. So, we looked at some options here. As you'll see, there's some pictures. These were also included in your packet. But some ideas of other buildings that are not necessarily in Shakopee, but have the same type of look. This is being slow. So, I'm gonna put it up here. Not sure what happened with the computer, but we'll put it up right here. So, we looked at different ideas of how this type of style might be incorporated or what we might look for. So, as you can see, we have our Huber Park Shelter. This is also our Huber Park Shelter in these pictures here. These other pictures are pictures of different types of buildings that are designed to look similar to that, but have that country feel with the beams and the wood. So, that was one of the options we looked at. The other idea is that because it's in the industrial park, having it more of the industrial feel, the modern look with the steel beams and lots of windows. So, we looked at different schemes and different designs that I also included in your packet with something like this. So, it still has the beams, the woods, different stone ideas, with the large windows. And being that it's gonna be on the lakefront, that was one of the things we really liked, was the large view of the lake and the windows that it could bring in and what that could potentially do with heating and cooling, which I'll go over here in a little bit as well. Okay. So, with that, then HCM came up with two concept designs for the park or for the shelter. One, we called it the Huber Park Model. And just as a schematic of what it looked like on the site... Oops, this is the wrong one. It's a two-building concept. So... Here is the waterfront down here. So, it's more at a 45-degree angle to the water, looking out at the main part of the lake. The layout here, and I'll show you some colored pictures that were also in your packet as well. But the layout for this one was that this bathroom here... Both designs had bathrooms that were available to the public, would be available 24/7, as our other parks are. They also included interior bathrooms that would be used just for the groups that were inside the building. So, in this concept, this little building off of here had the bathrooms for the public here, interior bathrooms here. All, both designs also have a commercial, not a commercial, sorry, a catering kitchen, a large meeting space for anywhere between 150 to 300 people that will be made more solid as we design, the final design of the park. But this is, I think, designed for about 300. It has a mechanical room, a small meeting room as well for the smaller type events that might be going on. Maybe you can have two events. Or if we have a wedding, the idea is that you could have a room for the bride and the groom or the gifts, and then the large area room. So, it'd have a meeting room, bathrooms, and then a large meeting space. This building included more features of the large windows, the wood. Like I said, the gable end was the big distinct item of that. And then going to the colored picture, this is more of that design. So, here's where I was describing. You come in. This is the smaller building. It is connected by this is the connection in the back, and then the large room, which is surrounded by the windows. This is the front view of it that will look out to the lake. Some large overhangs, different views here. So, we do have... Well, I'm gonna go through both designs first, and then we have an aerial fly-around of each design that we can show you so you can see it as a 3D. Then, the second design was called the Quarry Design, and it is, this is what the park board is recommending for a number of reasons. They liked the one solid footprint, the one building part of it. It's got the same type of meeting space, bathrooms here for the interior, and then the exterior bathrooms for the public here, a meeting room. One idea that's neat with this is there's a window here you can see straight through to the, to the lake. The park board made the comment, original, our plan was to be straight-on. Park board made the comment to tilt it so it looked out to the bigger part of the lake. And then this is the concept design. As you walk in from the side, whoops, this would be the plan. The desire or design now has limestone outside as a, as a building feature. That can also be talked about as we get to final design. But then the large windows on the front with the steel beams, more of a modern look. They liked this plan because it was distinct. It was, they feel this is a unique park. It needs a unique building. They felt it matched better with, had some natural features that meshed with the quarry concept, but also fit well within that industrial area. So, the park board had a couple of concerns about the heating and cooling and about the drainage of this building, being the roof is so large. And either Matt or Von could speak to this as well if there's further questions. But on this plan, there is a, you can see there is a gutter system here. That's an oversized gutter that would be put in through this roof that would go down these pillars and come out these downspouts here and be directed directly to either rain garden, underwater areas, anywhere to be, or not anywhere, but to be directed away from the lake. So, we wouldn't have any erosion into the lake and keep all the water from going towards the lake. Did I mention that correctly? The other idea that the council was, or that the park board was concerned with, was heating and cooling costs. If we were having this building 24/7, 365 days a year to be available, or maybe not quite every day of the year, but majority of the year, what would, are we gonna air-condition it? what would, are we going to air-condition it, heat it? And we did have, HCM did a wonderful job of looking at the sun and how it would affect this building if we went with this concept. So, they show us, and we have a video of that as well, if you'd like to see it, of the sun during the summer, and how it's higher, so it's shaded from that roof, keeping the big area cooler, helping with that. And then in the winter, the sun's lower coming in, it would help heat that large room coming in those windows. If we have a lot of winter events, we might have to look at some shading, but we'd have to see how it's used, how it's set up, that sort of thing. So... If you're interested, I can show you the videos of the fly-around. But what I'm looking for right now from council is the approval of the park board's recommendation for the Quarry Lake design as it's presented to you tonight for the footprint, so we can continue working on the final design of the site first, and then the final design of the shelter, which would be brought back to you at a future time with cost estimates and, you know, better idea of the materials that would be used in the size.
Do we get to see the fly-around?
Yes, I can show you this. Would you like just to see the quarry, or the both?
I was just going to say B.
Show us what you got. We don't know.
All right. So, this is, and I can pause it any time.
This is the second one, right?
This is the quarry model, yep. The recommended model by the park board. Should have some music to it. So, as you can see, they did this to the grade and the slope of the site that's out there. That's why we need to know the footprint, so we can work on what that grading would be around that building.
And while this is flying around, Jamie, I'll ask, is, are we anticipating this will be a LEED-certified building? Is that something that will come up later in discussion, or is that something we're looking at now?
That's something that would become up later in discussion as we look at the final design of it.
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is this area here a patio out in the front underneath this circular pattern? Looks like concrete.
This on the side here?
In the entrance.
Right here?
Top left.
The entrance is...
Oh, this?
Yep.
That is, whoops. Go back a little bit.
Multiple trails come together.
Yeah, that is where the trails come together, and it's, one idea that we had was that it would bring everybody to one spot. There'd be a kiosk kind of there, too, talking about the park, but it'd be that central gathering place that brings people from the northern shelter to this, to go into the bathroom and to go into that, and then you can go to the different trails from there.
Did the light lakeside area have more of that patio or cement work out in front, so there was space?
Yep, there was an overhang, and then there was a patio to the east side, correct? So, I'll pause it.
Okay, there, yeah.
Yep, so this is a patio here, and then this overhang is quite large on the front. But as we get down... It's not going to go that way.
Was there any discussion about the number of windows in this building?
The park board had talked about the windows, and that was one of the big items, that they wanted to see a lot of windows because of the, to help with the heating and cooling of the natural, with the natural light, but also just for the view of the lake. But there was concerns of whether or not, you know, vandalism and what that would be. So, that's something that, when we work on the final design of this park, we will have to talk about what is our risk? You know, how much windows do we really want in this design? There's different options where we don't need that many windows. Those would come with the final design also playing to cost. It may deter us from doing a lot of the windows if the cost is too high, but that would be something we talk about.
Other questions?
Is there a price difference between the two, or a guess at it?
Yes, for the initial price, which was based on 300 seats, for the first one was 2.4 million, and this one was 2.1, or do I have them mixed up? 2.4 for the Huber model and 2.1 for this, at the 300 seat. If we make that down to 200 seats, that would reduce our cost. Materials may reduce our cost, but rough estimate of just this concept is, that was the difference.
B is the lesser of the two?
Correct. And basically, that's because it's one footprint versus the two.
Okay. Because I was thinking with all those windows, that that would be higher.
Do we get to see A?
Sure. Here is... And as you can see, the shelter is up here. Right now, it's an open-air shelter. It will resemble whatever building we build, but it will still remain at this plan, a roof and the pillars as far as a shelter. So, here you can see that circular pattern as well at the entrance of that building.
What's the gray facade material there?
That's a limestone, correct? Limestone.
Flat roof.
And then the brick.
So, in a stormy event, I take it that smaller space is the space you want to be in?
That's a good question. What would you say?
Any interior space, sorry.
Not by the windows.
Right. Sorry, Matt Listney from HCM Architects. Thank you. Yeah, away from the windows, the smaller spaces. In both designs, probably the mechanical room, or for the public, the kitchen. The catering kitchen is the place to be. In those designs, they're about as interior as we get.
What's capacity of them spaces?
We're working with Jamie, depending on seating arrangements, we're probably 150, up to 200 or 300.
I mean, for, in a stormy event, the kitchen and the mechanical room.
The, and the toilet rooms are the other obvious one. So, it would, I wouldn't kid you, it'd be kind of like the elementary school tornado drill. It'd be packed in there pretty, pretty good.
It's safe, so packed is okay.
But it would get people in, for sure.
We talking 30 people, 40?
Why are we talking about storms right now? I mean, we got, we got lots of time to talk about storms, so... Let's talk about if we like A or B, and what'll move forward with which one.
I looked at all this glass, and I'm like, well, that space is out.
I was thinking it would be cost more.
It just naturally took me right out of that room.
Councilor Whiting?
Well, originally, I liked the concept of the first one with the gabled, the Huber Park look. But, you know, the consistency, it is a unique park, and I do like the idea that you are trying to create that unique feel with that quarry and that stonework there. So, you know, I'd be inclined to go with the cheaper model first, and then the fact that the parks, park and rec board like that quarry model, I think, I think I could accept that idea.
Councilor Mogul?
I will say that I liked the Huber Park look at first, too. And I was also thinking the windows were going to cost more, so that would be the different cost. But once I saw the aerial view, what I really liked about B was the uniform, that it all came together. Whereas when you looked from above at the first one, it was definitely split up. The circle was in a different space, that kind of thing, yep.
And I think that the, really, both of the buildings are, in the end, both designs would be very close in cost. The, what you're seeing is, glass is certainly more expensive, but footing and foundations for the design that's a little more broken up, and we're trying to give two different scales of building. There's more complexity to the footing and foundation system than the one that looks more like Huber. So, that's why I think the costs, and these are very preliminary budget estimates, but they're coming basically apples to apples. And we'd definitely refine that more at the end of a schematic phase, so that there were real, you know, definitive cost estimates with whichever design is selected.
Councilor Whiting?
The only concern I have with the quarry model, and it's probably going to be with both models, but, you know, in the past, we've put up buildings, and the sun just glares in. So, when you're having a meeting or one of these events, it's just blasting you. So, then we got to invest in shades to make it really a usable space. So, did you say you had some of the tables with the sun showing the different glares and...
That shading study on...
Yeah.
Study?
Jamie's bringing up a video here, and with our software, we're able to, I'm just going to pause it for a quick second, but with the software, we're able to, this is geo-specific, so it's, it is truly at Quarry Park with the sun angles for that, for that area. So... And here you can see, so the sun traveling across, this is June, so this is the summer solstice. And with the front overhang, the sun never quite makes it into the space, overheating it. Here you can see the sun at, in the winter, traveling through the space and bringing some warmth to the space. You'll see, right? Wonder what happened there? Sorry?
That was the end.
Oh, okay. There's a point in time, later in the day in the winter solstice, where when the sun angle's really low, it does get very deep in the building. So, I think it's a legitimate concern to think about how we would shade, and if you were doing an event in the evening.
Just to have that opportunity to use that building without being blinded by the sun in the wintertime at Lake...
Like that meeting that we had at, was it Spring Lake Township?
Yeah, there were some, I had meetings at the library, you know, has been an issue until they got some blinds in there.
One of the things we've talked to Jamie about potentially is that this upper glazing could be a translucent material that still allows, still allows light and disperses it deeper, but it's not a glare. And one of the advantages of those translucent panels, too, is that you get quite a bit of a raise in your thermal value because they're thicker as well as translucent.
And this design, I also think, is reminiscent of the other park buildings that we've got, of the one at the 17th Avenue Sports Complex and at Sand Venture.
Yeah, Sand Venture.
With the, with the long sloping roof, I think it very much fits in that vein, and it won't be out of place at all. Councilor Lehman?
I'm good with B. I'm concerned about how many windows are in it, the long-term maintenance. And I like the idea of the light and stuff, but the long-term maintenance and vandalism, it's going to get awful expensive.
Is that a motion?
No, it's just a concern.
Anybody going to put it in a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the scheme B designed for future large shelter at Quarry Lake Park.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Councilor Whiting, discussion. Councilor Lou, you've been very quiet.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from this because I think it's overly ambitious. This, at this time, we can't be doing something like this.
This is just planning for, could be next year, could be 10 years down the road.
I know, I know, I've planned out a ways, and things can change a whole lot, but...
So, you can't abstain from votes unless you have some sort of conflict of interest?
He has to pay for it.
I mean, yeah, exactly. Yeah. You, I mean, you can do whatever you want, but this is not identifying the project as it is right now, it's just a step. So, Councilor Whiting?
We talked a little bit, and I don't know if we're going to get into it too much here, but we talked about Amazon tonight and park dedication fees. So, there is more money coming into that fund through different sources. Do we, do you recall what the park dedication fee on Amazon was going to be, the amount? Do we have that on?
I believe it was around $400,000.
So, with development, there is more money that goes into your CIP, and with some partners, I think, that we could find, and eventually, we could get this project done with...
With partners.
Strategic partners, I think, too, so...
Trying to find it here.
$69.30 per acre.
It's clear that there's just not enough funds at this point to do it, so...
But it's a plan.
Right, it doesn't stop you from...
You're amazing.
Building your dream, all those plans, and you save up, then you build it, but...
And we also brought in another 150 tonight as well. So, we're half a million closer to doing things, so... With the two projects that were final plotted tonight.
I also will say that some of the local businesses around, too, have been interested in what we're doing at the park and interested in structures. And at that point, I mean, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but we are applying for more grants as well. We have put another round of grants for this park this year. We'll get those, that determination back at the end of the summer. So, there may be more funding also coming in that way.
All right, any discussion?
Do we have any plans about reworking some of these windows, or is that...
Yes, yes. Where we're going to go from here, so if we, if this is the concept plan that's chosen tonight, which is what we're asking, then WSB can go back and plan the site with this footprint in mind. Then, what I can do with HCM is look at this design and work on all of those details. So, we'd work on the window concerns, we'd work on making sure the drainage and all of that works well, materials and costs, and getting the footprint to what we want it to be. Do we want it to be 150 people or 300? So, we still have to work on those fine details before we bring it back to and go to construct it. But that would be our next step.
I'm of the, Mayor, I'm of the opinion that we're in no shape to construct this at this point. Strictly a planning point.
Right, correct, yep. Yeah, funding would need to be identified and allocated and cost that, when we're ready to do that.
And some picnic tables in there?
Yes. Further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Did you vote? Or did you abstain?
Well, you're going to abstain.
You, all right, so you are four to zero with one abstention from Councilor Lou. You haven't done that in almost...
I know.
It's been over a year since you did that. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Polly. Item 12 is other business, and we quickly want to recognize that May 17th to 23rd is National Public Works Week, and I want to thank our Mr. Looney and everybody at Public Works for the great job that they do taking care of the community. And so, we have a proclamation for, whereas the many services provided by Public Works to our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, I declare, I proclaim the week of May 17th to 23rd, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the city of Shakopee, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing quality public work services, and to recognize the contributions to which Public Works representatives make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not only this week, but throughout the year. So, thank you very much, Mr. Looney, and your entire team, from Pinky and Bill and everybody involved, for everything you guys do. So, we obviously very, very much appreciate it. There it is, yeah.
Proclamation come with donuts or anything?
That's on the bottom line there.
Yeah, exactly. I missed that piece, so, but thank you very much. Anybody else that have anything they'd like to add, other business-wise? All right, seen none, entertain a motion to adjourn to June 2nd, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Councilor Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to June 2nd, 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Lou, any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone.